Proclamation accepted by Pastor Gail Oliver. If you are here, please come on down Pastor from the Greater Light Missionary Baptist Church. Madam, is the pastor, here, please come on down Pastor.
Mama Ship is here. Awesome. Yeah, bring, 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 bring the crew down.
Come around the side.
Around this way.
Oh, okay.
Mama Ship, you're not gonna stay there. Come on over here.
You mean Harris?
Well, it's a, an honor here to, to recognize Black History Month. In fact, let me get some of the, just a little bit of the, of the notes here. You know, this, the community here in Santa Ana, we're, we're very privileged in that we're, we're a diverse, diverse city. We, we do have a majority Latino community now, but the Latino community is not the only ethnic representation here, and we've been changing, evolving over the years. And one of the, the strengths, and I think one of the things that, that has been wonderful about our, about our city is that it's been, that the African-American community, the black community, has been a strong member of, of the makeup of Santa Ana. It's been, the concentration of the African community, African-American community in Orange County was, and has been here in Santa Ana. Fortunately, over, has, there's been differences and, and changes and demographics and such, and folks moving out, that a segment of, of our community has shrunk, shrunk some over the last several decades, but we still have a strong representation. And one of the wonderful things is that we still have a number of, of congregations, primarily African-American congregations, that still call Santa Ana home. And we have folks who continue to drive from other parts of the county and outside of the county to come back, back home to Santa Ana to worship and to be a part of our community here. This month of February is, is Black History Month recognized throughout the country. A little bit of background, back in February of 1926, Dr. Carter Goodwin Woodson, founder of the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, proposed the establishment of Negro History Week to honor the history and contributions of African-Americans. In 1976, Black History Month was formally adopted. Black History Month affords a special opportunity for us to acknowledge black heritage and the so, that so many contributions that the, the African-American members of our community have, have, have made towards our, our history, our country. Unfortunately, we, we no longer have, at least we haven't had for the last several years, the, the Black History Parade and then, and Cultural Fair. But one of the, the things that I really enjoyed doing when we did have the Cultural Fair here is bringing my kids out. There was a history walk, and there were, there were so many things that I was enlightened to, and we, we shared some of that in one of the previous years past, but so many inventions that African-Americans have contributed to, to our, our country and to, to, to the world. And so, it's, it's, again, just a wonderful thing to be able to, as a city, to recognize. Here, to my right is Pastor Gail, Gail Oliver, who's become a friend here over the last several months. And I know you've been here in, in town and in Santa Ana for a long time. The congregation, Greater Light Missionary Baptist Church has, has been as well. And more recently, you've taken the, the leadership and steps to embrace our community even more so here in Santa Ana. One of the, one of the beautiful things as well is oftentimes, we kind of stay to ourselves, if you will, different ethnic groups or language, by, you know, any distinction by language or ethnicity and such. And Pastor Gail Oliver here has been very intentional about himself and his congregation reaching out to the community around, even with, with the, the fact that demographics have changed, but we've been intentional about connecting the Latino community, the Spanish-speaking community. A few months ago, there was a Convoy of Hope, and we had a pastor here from the Methodist Church as well, that we're all coming together. And so, that's one of the things that's been very encouraging to me, to see our churches coming together. And, and even more specifically, on, on Thursday afternoons, I've had an opportunity to participate with you. Maybe you can share a little bit. You, you get together and, and you meet up here at the Plaza of the Flags and, and for a time of, of prayer, and just, just to pray over our city. And that's been something that's been very encouraging and moving to me. So, so colleagues and city staff, city manager, just know that Pastor Oliver here is, has you and, and the team of other folks, us all in mind, and praying over us, praying over City Hall, just they get together right in the shadows of that City Hall and praying for the residents of our city every Thursday afternoon. So, I wanted to give you an opportunity to, to ask you to just share a little bit about just any, any of the things that, that the, that churches, African-American community, maybe what you do a little bit on Thursdays, just kind of, I know you have a heart for, for our city and our community. If you wouldn't mind sharing with us, please.
Amen. Thank you. Amen. Amen, I'm a little shorter than my brother here. Glory be to God. We thank God for this opportunity, and I really thank God for my brother in Christ here, Brother David, Mayor Polito, God bless you, and all the elected officials, God bless you. What we started doing last year, God placed it on my heart to meet with Mr. Benavides to see if we could start a prayer meeting right here by the flag area, to start praying for our city. There's a lot of things going on in each and every city, but we want Santa Ana, we want a revival here at Santa Ana, so we've been praying for the homeless, we're praying for the city officials, police officers, doctors and nurses, the homeless, you name it, and we just, we're praying that those who are in gangs will be, will come out of gangs, praying for, that God would do something about the sex trafficking going on to keep our children safe. And so, we're just praying that Santa Ana, that God will bless us with revival, and I thank God so very much for my brother David that has a heart for Santa Ana. I was born and raised in Santa Ana in 1965. The church I pastor out, pastor at has been around since 1961, so it's older than I am. But my heart is here in Santa Ana, so I just thank God for the opportunity to come out here and pray. Sister Francine Harris, let me introduce my wife Bernadette Oliver, my granddaughter Bailey, and Sister Francine Harris, when I'm not able to make it on Thursdays at noon, Sister Francine Harris and Minister Anthony Reese, they come out and pray and minister. And she looks like she's older than 18, but she runs around like she's about 18 and a half. And so, I just thank God for her energy because she's still on the battlefield. And so, I just thank God for this opportunity, and we are praying for, for Santa Ana, for revival here, and we're praying that you would join us. Everyone is invited to come right here at the, to the flag area, Thursdays at 12 noon. We pray for about 30 minutes, and then afterwards, if God opens the door, we'll minister to people along the way. So, we thank God once again, and we pray that everyone, everything and everyone will, that God would bless us to be on one accord. So, we need to converge together. All the races and nationalities come together as one, and let's make Santa Ana a place that America talks about as far as what's going on in Santa Ana, because we need to implement it. Amen.
Do you mind sharing with us, I know that, that prayer is very important, you know, just to demonstrate that care and support to our community, but you're taking a step beyond Saturday, you're coming together. Can you tell us a little bit about what you're doing on Saturday?
Oh, amen. Actually, this Saturday, last month, we were able to start feeding the neighborhood. God opened the door for, last month on the 17th, and then again, I believe it was on the 26th, and what we decided to do is to start knocking on the doors in our neighborhood with two bags of groceries. So, as we knock on the door with two bags of groceries, they open the door, we hand them groceries, and then we hand them Jesus Christ. Amen. So, it's a blessing, a lot of the neighbors, man, it was just so touching because I did not realize that we were gonna be so welcoming, that there were so many hungry families. As we gave out grocery bags, a lot of the family members started crying, and they invited us in to pray. And so, I was just amazed that there's, there's just so many hungry people in our city of Santa Ana. So, it was a blessing. We thought only about eight or 10 people were gonna come out to help us, and it wound up being about 40 that came out the first day we decided to go out and door knock. Temple of Alvario came out and they helped us out. So, we want the black Americans and the Hispanics to converge together as a people because we need to get together as a people and as the children of God, because we need, we desperately, desperately need a change and a transformation here in Santa Ana. And I thank God for what he's doing. I feel into my spirit, he's already doing it, but we need to really reach those who are hungry, pray for those who are homeless, and that God would just create a shift. Amen. But it starts with us loving one another, and we need to walk in unity and love the city that God gave us here at Santa Ana.
Thank you very much Pastor Oliver. And again, there's a lot that has been done throughout history with, with significant leaders in the African-American community. Currently, one of those significant leaders that we have currently is in our own president, Barack Obama. But one of the great things is that within our community locally, we have just everyday heroes that are just stepping out from their churches, from their businesses, from their different organizations, serving our community. And one example of those is, is what you just described, of going out and just bringing groceries to, to hungry families. And so, we appreciate that and all the different service hours and that, that coming together of, of our community, different ethnicities, different languages. And so, we're, we're grateful for that service. So, here on behalf of, of the City of Santa Ana, the mayor, and all six members of the city council, we'd like to present you this proclamation, recognizing Black History Month and, and in celebration of, of all that this month means. Thank you very much.
Amen. And we're doing, it's the Saturday. Amen. We're, we're feeding the neighborhood this Saturday at 10:30. We're located 1600 West Third, right behind Southwest Community. So, all those who want to come out and help, you're invited to come out and help, and we just thank you. We praise God for you, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Since the mayor's not speaking, I want to challenge my colleague, Councilman Benavides, and Pastor Oliver here. You know, a couple of months ago, I was in the city of Compton helping the mayor, and they have this Compton Initiative that is very faith-based. I think we can do a much better job here in Santa Ana, and so if we can get the faith-based community to start a nonprofit like the, like the Compton Initiative and what they're doing, we can do some amazing things. And so, what, if, I, I will be willing to help and support my colleague David Benavides to get more information on that initiative, to see what we can do here, Pastor Oliver.
Amen. I know who started.
He's a deputy sheriff.
Thank you for that, Councilman Martinez, and thank you Pastor for, for coming down, and thank you Councilman Benavides for, for the recognition. Now, Councilman Roman Reina, special recognition to El Sol.
At this time, can I have all the, El Sol Committee, Planning Committee members come on up, please? You were involved with the project, come on up. I'm gonna call my council member as well, colleague, come on in here. We're gonna talk about this incredible event that took place February 8th. And on a side note, one of our political colleagues worked harder than I had ever seen in my entire life, and that was school board member John Palacio was working up an absolute sweat to put this project together, to help build this project together. And I've known John for about five years, I've never seen him work so hard in my life, which was great. So, we were all taking pictures of him because we didn't think we'd ever see this again. So, this, this past February, we had a, this planning committee came on together, worked with a couple of additional partners, with Good Neighborhood Pharmacy, as well as Kaboom, to be able to put together a playground project at El Sol. They had over 150 volunteers, they had, in fact, they had a turn away volunteers. To see the project come together and so many hands coming to the table was absolutely phenomenal. It's that old adage, that many hands make light work, and this was a great example of it. You had a lot of different partners at the table, the city, the school district, parents and PTAs and local businesses, phenomenal support, phenomenal support. And to put this construction together in eight hours was absolutely phenomenal. It's a testament of what we can really do, we put all our differences to the side, and we focus on the goal. And it was a great success. As I mentioned before, when I spoke to my colleague David Benavides, said, "So, what type of work we're gonna do there?" He says, "Well, make sure you bring your jeans." And I'm like, "Wow, sounds like we're gonna do some work." And we worked, we worked. Me and John were sweaty the entire morning. What blew me away was my colleague was working just as hard, but I didn't see him perspiring at all. And he said, "Roman, I'm just used to working out, you need to get out there a little bit more." So, so I'm not sure about that part, but I was blown away that, that he was not perspiring whatsoever. It was a great project. At this point, I do want to bring up Martha, Berta to come on up and speak briefly about it. Unfortunately, our principal is not in right now, so if I can bring a spokesperson to speak briefly about the project. Don't be shy.
I didn't know I was volunteered.
I didn't, no wonder they kept asking, "Miss Picasso, are you going?" I'm one of the schoolteachers there at El Sol, I'm a kindergarten teacher. In June, I will have my 10th year at El Sol. It's an honor to be part of such a wonderful place. My son graduated from me there. He started Kinder, and they graduated and went to Sage Hill down in Newport Coast. It's a wonderful school. It brings the full potential of kids to be bilingual, and now my son's studying Chinese. So, they learn a lot in how to transition to new languages, and it opens a whole new perspective of how we welcome different cultures. So, well, the idea was brought forth by, apparently Monique applied for Kaboom, and we really wanted, we really want us establish ourselves at El Sol. It's been a whole bunch of bungalows and trying to get the facility going, so she's done a wonderful job. And we just needed this playground for all these kids that we have them playing different activities, but wasn't something that lightened up their eyes, so it was really nice to do it. And actually, we were, Mr. Lopez is the other teacher, we were at the Fall Festival, and they're like, "Oh, we need teachers, come on and sign up." And so, we said, "Okay, we'll do it." So, we signed up, but really, the parents were the ones that do all the work. We met for, I believe, 10 weeks, phone conferences, putting it together with the great help of Kaboom, who does this. She said she had done 12 projects before us, but we were the ones that made the most money. We made $10,000 in a short time. So, in reality, El Sol is exactly that. It is the parents that make the movement, it's the parents that make our dreams reality. As schoolteachers, we are limited because we are the ones that do the work in the classroom, but it's really the parents who do all this phenomenal job, and it is amazing to see them work. And it's, it makes you feel like you belong to this wonderful community, and that they know that you're part of it, and that's what makes El Sol unique, because the parents make El Sol, the students make El Sol. And it makes me proud to be a teacher at El Sol, regardless of all the challenges we have. But this was like a phenomenal program that I was happy to be part of, and I know Ben and Mr. Palmer, which is our music teacher, was too. But it was just so great to be part of this, and I just think that as a teacher, I want to thank the parents for all their hard work, and these are all our parents that are right here. I don't know if anybody else wants to add something?
Parent, representative, don't be shy.
Hello, my name is Anel Del Toro. I have a daughter who's very fortunate enough to attend this school, and she's a first grader. And I know along with myself, along with all these other parents that are here, we do it because we want to make a difference in our children's school. We see how hard these teachers and staff work at this school, and we want to be able to help them any way we can and become that community that El Sol talks about and is part of their mission statement. So, we were very proud, and I don't think there is any words to express the feeling we saw when those kids finally had the opportunity to play in this playground. It was amazing, it was just great to see all the laughs, laughter, all of that that we got to see in their faces. So, I think that alone made this whole thing very, very much worth it. So, thank you very much.
Well, just briefly, it was, it was a great time. It was a fun time to, to see our community coming together. Again, the parents, schoolteachers, community volunteers, elected, and it's for our kids. And El Sol is, is doing some amazing work in arts and science. There is a partnership that they do have with Sage School, where, if you're not familiar with Sage School, it's, it's basically up there with a, a modern-day, you know, type of caliber school in Newport Coast. And we have some of our local kids from Santa Ana, they go through K-8, El Sol, and then are, are able to potentially go out with scholarship out to this amazing high school and then, and go off to college. And so, it was just a small, you know, a few hours of, of manual labor that Councilman Reina and myself and several others were able to contribute. Apparently, they had a turnout, turn away, somehow we snuck in, but they had turned away a couple hundred, several hundred volunteers, and somehow we snuck in, they let us in. So, thank you for that. So, with that, let's go ahead and present, we have a smaller group of, of the committee members, so let's go ahead and, and recognize those who are, who are here. We have Julie Castro. Anel Del Toro. Marcus Gallagher. Jenny Guido. Cynthia Guido. Benjamín López. Callie Mendoza. Candace Morales. Again, the certificate of recognition here on behalf of the, the mayor, of the mayor and the council in the city of Santa Ana says, has a person's name, El Sol Playground Built Planning Committee, in appreciation of your outstanding and dedicated volunteer service on the El Sol Science and Arts Academy Playground Project. This one's presented to Berta Picasso. So, congratulations. Thank you so much for your dedication. One more round of applause here for our group.
Okay, we're going to defer the next presentation until other folks arrive, so right now, we're just gonna go on to public comment for a period of time. So, Steve Rocco, followed by Armando Felix Cardenas, please. And after Armando, David Exline, and if you could come on down so that when I call your name, we'll speed things up. Please go ahead, Steve Rocco.
Well, for those of you who don't know, we have a police officer sitting to my right. This is the second time I've ever seen that, and I've spoken now about 10 times already. But that's not really why I'm here. I'd like to be your public administrator, and it seems like so would Anthony Rocaques. On June the 5th of 2012, the people of Orange County decided to vote that that would be an elected official. Well, that seems to have no effect upon the very mysterious Rocaques, who managed to get himself appointed to this position. So, despite getting 20 signatures, all good, have to start all over again. So, I'll now be in the June 3 election for court recorder. For those of you who don't know what the public administrator does, what the public administrator does is basically attempt to take your property and your life, and he does that in conjunction with other organizations. And on these merry visits, which you get from the public administrator and other social services at your house, they break down your door in, in Santa Ana every time with the Santa Ana Police Department. Well, what's the difference between this and Polito's plantation system? Well, in the old days, you couldn't kill the slaves. Well, now it seems that you can kill the slave, and you can also take his property and his house and everything else. Says who? Says me, who has seen it, who has spent 10 years in the medical field watching this happen and documented it all and had my objections. Well, Mr. Rocaques doesn't like that, so he had his wonderful people at the public, I mean, at the Board of Supervisors appoint him to this position, although it is illegal. So, our objections to this were filed last week with the necessary paperwork and at the correct agencies. We'll see what happens before June. If not, I'm there for records, and which is just as bad, because we know that the records of these people who are killed with this wonderful process of elimination of killing our slaves in Orange County gets covered up at the records, at the coroner offices, and by the sheriff's department. Just another little bit of wonderful work from our wonderful mayor. Rocaques is organized crime. He cannot be on a task force looking for it when he is organized crime. And so are you, Miguel Polito.
All right, that's our first speaker. Now, Armando Felix Cardenas, followed by David Exline, followed by Peter Katz.
Yes, good evening, just members of the city council. My name is Armando Felix, and I've just been here before, I don't know if you remember, but most of the time, it's just regarding the YMCA building that I just, we've just been requesting the building, just to build a ministry to help the needy in here in the area of, of Santa Ana. As you know, the, the homeless that are here across the street, and, and, you know, for the reasons of time, I understand that there is a process right now taking place regarding the building. And, but the focus of my comment here tonight is just this one. I would like to just ask the, please, to keep an open heart to help the needy. One of the blessed things about these meetings is that I see how you respect the faith, how we see that you honor people of faith like this beloved pastor that just came here, and we pray. And so, I know that you are a people of faith, and I'm also, I'm a man who believe in God and who hears God's word, and, and, well, as we consider the homeless across the street, and that's the task that the Lord has laid in my heart, to just go and get the building. And everybody has a, a calling in his life, and my calling has been to get this building, so I just have to obey what the Lord just puts in my heart. And, and, well, just basically, it doesn't have to be a very, you know, something easy to understand. Please, as, as you consider, you know, to whom to give the YMCA building, I know the process, there's different people that have presented out some proposals concerning the building. We've been doing ministry for more than 20 years, and there's a lot of investments, there's a lot of people coming. I mean, right now, as soon as I come out from here, I gotta go to the streets and help the people. And so, there's a lot of people really pouring a lot of time and effort and resources coming from far away, and they're being so faithful, just working, you know, every week. And, and this building, as you know, was, the YMCA was built up in first place for a Christian ministry. That was the main focus of the building. And, and I know that the Lord wants to do something beautiful on that building, but we need your help. And so, I just ask you to, I mean, as I've just been praying, asking, "Lord, what do you want me to say?" I mean, you say, "Just go and say what's in your heart." And, you know, I know the Lord wants us to get the building to help these people. And so, please, I just ask you as a favor, just to keep an open heart for the homeless. I know that it is beautiful to have businesses and to build, you know, finances, there's nothing wrong with that, but our people are more important, and these people are here across the street. So, I just want to thank you, you know, for the heart that you guys have, for the needing, for the faith that you have in your heart. And so, we're just working as a team. And so, I just here just tonight, just to please, just to ask you as a favor, please consider, just let us have the building to, to help these people. Thank you very much. God bless.
Thank you, David Exline, followed by Peter Katz, followed by Steve McGuigan.
Good evening, everyone. I am David Exline, and I am here on behalf of the Friends of the Santa Ana Zoo. I would just like to, I've, I've just been recently elected to president of FOZAS, and I just would like to briefly introduce fellow board member Armando Armenta, and also Steve McGuigan, and of course, our executive director Kathy Decker, who I think you all know. And also in the back is, is the zoo manager Kent Yamaguchi. I just want to mention that, first of all, I'm delighted to be here, and such a pleasure to be a part of FOZAS. I've been a board member for now about six years, and just newly elected as president of, of the All Volunteer Board. Last year, we raised almost $1.2 million in cash donations, grants, and, and labor, volunteer labor toward the improvement, all dedicated to the Santa Ana Zoo. Tonight, I know that we, in our last board meeting, I have to put my glasses on because I can't see, but appropriation adjustment 20B, we did approve a donation toward the purchase of one of the temporary trailer buildings on behalf of the of one of the temporary trailer buildings on behalf of the city. We're donating the funds to make that acquisition, and we're very, very pleased and happy to make that happen this year. Just want to, if you all haven't had a chance to go out to Santa Ana Zoo, please come and enjoy the facilities that we have. It's getting better all the time. And for all of us involved with FOZAS and all the staff people at the Santa Ana Zoo, we look forward to making this year one of the best years in terms of improvements and making the zoo the best that it can be. Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming down, and thank you for the good work you're doing at the zoo, all of you. Peter Katz, followed by Steve McGuigan.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just want to bring a technical problem to your attention. You may, the city clerk may not be aware of this, but the meeting prior to Christmas, I was here, and I had gotten here early, and the city clerk had not arrived yet, so I did not get my parking ticket validated. And during the course of the meeting, I completely forgot about it. And at the end of the meeting, I was engaged in a conversation, and when I got back to my car, I realized I didn't have parking ticket validation, and I didn't have my wallet with me. So, I came back to the council chambers, and there was nobody here. There was a number on the door, and I called, and the gentleman was the technical staff, and he was at home, and told me there was nobody he could call, and there was nothing he can do. But however, if you drive around to the side gate where they have an employee at that gate, they will probably, they will let you out. Well, that was just the beginning of the nightmare. I drove around to that side gate, and this is a county official who said, if you have no money and no identification, I can't let you out the gate. I asked to call, to talk to a supervisor. I called the supervisor, and the supervisor drove down to talk to me, and he says, well, it's our policy, if you don't have the money, we can't let you out of the gate. Keep in mind, the meeting adjourned about 8:30, quarter to 9:00. I said, well, is there anybody that can make a decision so I can go home here? I'll go home and get you the money and bring it back? Can you, can you let the city clerk know and bill me or do something? No, we can't do that. But I'll let you call the chief supervisor at home. Well, I called him at home, and he said he wasn't getting out of bed, and there was nothing that he can do. I said, you're a county agency, this is a city agency, this is where two government agencies don't talk to each other. And you are agencies, you work for the people. The people don't work for you. And so, my point is, the library has the same system over there at their building. That day, several years ago, I had forgotten my wallet, they wouldn't let me out of that garage. I parked my garage, car there. I wanted to go home and get the money, they wouldn't let me bring the money back. So, I went to the library and had to borrow the money off the secretary in the Rallos office, so I can get my car out of the garage. So, I think it simply would be a standard letter on file at these parking garages, if you have a problem, please contact the city clerk the next day, and the money would be covered, whether you have to get to me or just simply pay it. I mean, that's a simple problem. And it brings to mind that, because there was a girl arrested for going to a police station in Ohio, simply because she forgot to return a video to a video store nine years ago. I mean, these are problems that we can work out. It costs money, and I was frustrated. By the time I got out of there, was when they closed the gate, was 11:30 at night, two and a half hours later.
Thank you, Peter, and persevere. Our city manager heard that, will try to help you out. Steve, followed by Barbara Lemire, followed by Nick Spain.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. As you know, I come up here on a number of different items. Tonight, I'm coming here representing the community and the American Cancer Society. At the last meeting, you got to hear a little bit about the Relay for Life, which is coming to Santa Ana College on April 12. I hope you'll all, hopefully, be there for the opening lap. It's a pretty important event for the community, and I'd like to thank council member Sarmiento for coming to the relay kickoff. It sort of signifies the importance of this event to the community. And basically, oh, you guys have a team now?
He's team captain.
You guys rock. That's what I like to hear. The city, the city has almost always had a team, and so, I'm excited to see that you guys are back on board. So, we're looking forward to that and making you part of this event. We've worked with a number of different community agencies, and the Orange County Healthcare Agency, and even the Mexican consulate in getting the word out about this event. Our current outreach, and what we think is important right now, is that part of the event is about honoring cancer survivors. There are a lot of people in our community that have been affected by cancer, and it's basically one in three right now. So, if it's not you, it's somebody you know, whether it's the person at your store, the person who does your nails, somebody that's a teacher at your school. All throughout the community, people are being affected by this horrible disease. So, what we're doing right now is we're trying to get a hold of as many cancer survivors in the community as we can, people from Santa Ana who are actually cancer survivors. And we want to make sure that they're invited to the event, and we're doing some other things for the survivors as well. I know that some of you have newsletters that you send out periodically, and if it's appropriate, we'd like to be able to send you some information that you can include in those newsletters, telling your constituents and the Santa Ana residents how to get in contact with the people that are organizing this event, and with the people that are doing these survivor events in the community, so that we can invite them to be a part of it directly, and be able to talk to them and have a dialogue with them and get them involved with the event. So, if you could help us out with doing that, I'd love to be able to send you some information and make sure that we're contacting as many people as we can, because I know that you people are very well-connected. And I know that the outreach that we're doing just isn't enough, it's never going to be enough. So, if you could help out with that, and then we look forward to seeing your teams and all of you come out on April 12. It's at Santa Ana College. We step off at 12 noon with the survivor lap, and we'll be there for 24 hours. The 24 hours signifies that people that live with cancer live with it 24 hours a day. We'll be doing special stuff for caregivers, we have lots of great events for families and kids, lots of great information. So, even if you're not there specifically to support the event, we do invite the Santa Ana community to drop by and see exactly what we're doing there, and take advantage of the educational opportunity that this event provides. You can find out about the event at www.ACSEvents.org/SantaAnaCa, Santa Ana, California. And that way, you can find us online and sign up your team if you haven't already done so. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Steve, Barbara, followed by Nick Spain, followed by Jeannie Gillette.
Barbara Lemire, 48 and a half year resident of Santa Ana. First, I'd like to speak about what Peter said, because I was at CommLink, and I went out to the parking garage. There's a girl, the carload of her children, somehow her husband ended up in jail, she didn't have a nickel to get out. I had to pay it, but I went and paid it, so I knew where the money went. So, I sympathize with him. People do get stuck, and we don't have anywhere for them to turn. But anyhow, I think about the word lobbyist, that was kind of strong two weeks ago. He did lobby you. Mr. Smith, lawyer Smith, did lobby you, but the lobbyist was a little strong. So, I apologize, you guys, I apologize. I didn't mean to be so brutal. I just wanted, it's been bothering me, and I went to the trustees' meeting tonight and apologized. They didn't care, but that's okay. I knew you were all concerned about me. And all the Centennial Park issue, everything's in closed session, and it was kind of so many questions. What was the missing letter from the park commissioner, the questions and all? And still, Mr. Cavassos, we voted on it. There were so many questions. We just had to get it out of the way. I don't understand this. Santa Ana, California, USA, guys, let's go by that. All that missing and nothing happening. I'm still kind of concerned about that, giving them five more years, and that's not getting with it. As far as the Pacific Electric, that's our land. We can develop it, we can come boom it, we can do something. And everybody just wants to ignore this issue, and it's been very hard. Everything I've spoke on that, I've researched and found out. We couldn't even find out how much the college gave us last year. What's going on, folks? We need responsibility, we really do. And if you don't have an ethics commission, please get one. I felt violated last time, and I didn't ask for it, it wasn't on the subject. Someone has something with me, we can discuss it, and I've offered to get together, and I've been ignored, and I appreciate everyone for listening. Thank you.
Just real quick, we do have an ethics commission, we will be meeting on February 27.
Well, I hope you look at that. Thank you.
Sure.
And I'm sorry that happened, but I only speak on things I have proof of. But thank you.
Thank you. Nick Spain, followed by Jeannie Gillette.
I don't know about the rest of you, but I'm making sure I've got my parking validation safe and secure here. Well, I'm, I can guess you know that myself and my colleagues are speaking on the Sexlanger Orchard Development Project, which is going to come before you very soon. We just learned, looking at the agenda today, that it's not quite as soon as we have been told. It's been moved back to March 18, according to tonight's agenda from March 4. Not uncommonly, we're some of the last to know when these changes are made. What we want to address tonight briefly are issues relating to the recent planning commission hearings on this issue, which took place a week ago last night. The planning commission, as you may well be aware of, voted 6 to 1 to recommend the development project that the applicants put forth for the two-story housing development on the five-acre historic orchard. Specifically, we want to address some factors that we feel influenced the planning decisions vote, and that's based on comments that commissioners made during the hearing itself or made to us privately after the commission. So, we're not speculating here, these are public statements that were made. And I'm sure that others, even some of the members of the council may have similar misconceptions or have been hearing a false narrative. And the first one of those relates to private property rights. There are some commissioners on the planning commission that feel that private property rights supersede the process, and that is their stated position, and we assume affects their votes. Now, the applicants, in this case, the Lutheran schools, have the right to petition the city for project approval. They have the right to the process, and that's what we are all engaged in on this issue. But they do not have the right to approval or any specific guarantee to a particular desired outcome. We do recognize, all of us, that the rightful owners have a right to financial gain, and they're trying to secure that through the development project there. We must also remember that they received that now historic orchard through donations. So, I think the bar for a dollar amount for a fair compensation may be lower than it might be had they paid fair market value. So, that's the first.
Nick, if you can conclude, your time is up.
I will. I'm going to say one other thing, and this is very important, is Mike Gibbons, who's the representative for Orange Lutheran, who speaks for the schools, completely mischaracterized and falsified our attempts to purchase the orchard this past summer. And he basically stated that we had made an offer of roughly 30% of market value and that we wanted to pay on time. That is absolutely false. When we were meeting with the schools in June, we put $2 million in cash on the table. That is money we had secured. They didn't feel it was adequate. We then explored ways to raise the remaining amount of money to meet what they wanted and decided that it wouldn't work.
Thank you, Nick. Thank you. Jeannie, if you want to complete some of his thoughts, I know you speak on the same subject.
Yeah.
Please.
We just wanted to clarify that. Thank you very much.
Good evening, council. I'm Jeannie Gillette, president of the Old Orchard Conservancy. I wanted to address the comment that we've heard over and over again, that the process has gone on long enough. I think it's very important to clarify and for everyone to understand that there is no set timeline for any kind of application process. It's a process based on a checklist of requirements that need to be satisfied. And the only guidelines regarding a calendar deadline would be the Streamlining Act, which includes a one-year plus 180-day timeframe for the council to act. We have identified five factors that have contributed to the process for this project and the reason it's taken as long as it has. And the first one is related to the 2007 recession that delayed the initial application for three years. And then, in fall of 2010, the process started again, and the greatest amount of time spent was, has been on the preparation of the EIR, which the conservancy has characterized as grossly deficient in its early stages and still deficient in its current form after about four revisions. This lengthy process has been characterized by staff intransigence to suggestions and recommendations from the public, coupled with the city's consultants entrenched position regarding the significance of the orchard. It appears that the staff and the consultants have now become advocates for the owners. Next, the staff failed to follow policy regarding the HRC involvement in this process, and specifically, they did not follow city code guidelines related to historic properties and obligations and responsibilities related to the city's participation in state historic preservation programs. The state preservation office in Sacramento was engaged to remind city staff of their role and programs, in the programs which require HRC participation. And the conservancy successfully appealed the HRC's initial decision to provide this, to place this property on the historic register. And lastly, over the past year, the schools have been the ones that have asked the staff to pull the item from the council agenda for various reasons, dating back to March of 2013. The conservancy hasn't asked for any kind of delays. However, we have, since October of 2011, been asking for the city planning department to include a meaningful preservation alternative for the historic Sexlanger Farm and/or farmhouse and orchard. I also just want to point out one more thing about the planning commission.
Please conclude, Jeannie, you're out of time.
There seem to be a bit unclear as to the definition of the resource. They seem to think that it's just the house. Staff did clarify that it's not, but commissioners still seem to think it's just the house, and that's what's in the EIR now, is to preserve just the house.
Thank you. Steve Ray, followed by Theodore Hirsch.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Steve Ray. I'm here for the Old Orchard Conservancy. I want to pick up on what Jeannie Gillette was just talking about, and that was the historic resource. The historic resource that this council declared is the Sexlanger Orchard and Farmhouse. That's both together. Both of them together create the historical character of that property. I just want to read something from you. I would have brought the dictionary, but it's really big. Webster's Dictionary of the English Language defines orchard as "a stretch of land with cultivated fruit trees," a stretch of land cultivated with fruit trees. Well, cultivated means land prepared for or planted with crops. Crops is defined as harvests our grains and fruits while they're growing or when harvested. So, this orchard met all of the requirements to be called a true orchard, and it is an orchard. What is being proposed by your staff and by the owners of the property is a project that would destroy the orchard, literally. There would be no orchard left, since it is part of the entire designation of the historic site, that would not be left. What you would have is what Webster's defines as a yard, and a yard is, let me get the exact definition here, a yard is a, is defined by Webster's as "a small, open space, completely or partly enclosed, and adjoining a building." And that's what is being proposed. They're proposing one house with about 10 trees in the yard, and they're calling that an orchard. That does not make an orchard, that's a yard. They have not, are not preparing to retain the resource itself. That is a significant issue. Besides that, they have been destroying in the process of just trying to destroy the orchard itself through negligence. It's what's called legally demolition by negligence. And that has been going on, because they have not been taking care of the property. And I know you will hear, when the project comes to you, that, well, there aren't that many good trees left out there and everything. But remind you that under CEQA, you're required to go back to the time that the notice of preparation for the EIR was prepared, and that becomes the baseline condition that you have to judge the property on, not what it is now, after they have been practicing this demolition for neglect. There are many other issues that we're going to be bringing to you, and we look forward to seeing you in the future council meetings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Theodore Madlin, Theodore Hirsch now, followed by Madlin Spencer, and then Guadalupe Mata.
Actually, I think you called him me when you're.
Yeah, yeah, well, he, you're Theodore Hirsch.
Yeah, I'm Theodore, yeah.
And he's Stephen Ray.
There you go. Okay, so. So, I'm here to talk about the strategic plan and inscribing restorative justice to it. Let's see. In the year of 1991, I didn't really prepare this speech. I got to read it like a robot. I wish I would have prepared it. Anyway, in the year of 91, more than 60 homeless were arrested for violations ranging from jaywalking to littering, and then, because a judge stepped in human feces, after which he called and asked to have the homeless removed, and then, the officers put them in the stadium, and they were chained to benches, and marked with identification numbers, and they were photographed, and then they were left in the stadium for several hours and cited until released. And then, in 94, SAPD was found manufacturing crack cocaine in police labs for use in reverse drug-sting operations, something most police departments rarely do, yet it was done here. And over the course of the operation, police arrested about 350 people, and many of our youth, a large portion of these individuals, are arrested within a few blocks of Willard Intermediate School. And then, in January 2009 and June 2012, it was shown that Orange County, specifically Santa Ana and Anaheim, accounts for 43% of the state's total referrals of juveniles to U.S. Immigration and Customs Enforcement. So, the county referred nearly 550 youths to ICE detention holds, ICE detention holds. Anyway, the conclusion is, the city of Santa Ana's police force have implemented very powerful public and private institutional practices and policies in the past, and unjust practices, these unjust practices still continue today at an alarming rate. These training patterns and practices that are implemented into the system and taught to our younger police officers are maintaining a tradition of unfair police practices and have done so for decades. Police, or, I'm sorry, policies which do not give us restitution or amends of the racism and suffering that is held in place institutionally, which is common practice in all to most prison institutions in America. Anyway, and I'm talking about Santa Ana, though. Anyway, there are, there are city politicians in Santa Ana who view this present social arrangement as inevitable, as an inevitable norm and permanent. This attitude by politicians of Santa Ana is what allows the city to continue to uphold and keep this violence actively perpetuating.
Theodore, if you could conclude, you're out of time.
So, the point is, again, I just want to reiterate that to stop the institutional violence in our communities and inscribe restorative justice into the, into our strategic plan.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Before Madlin comes down, I want to call in Councilman Vince Sarmiento. We have some folks here from organizations that we were going to present earlier, but we are waiting. They since have arrived, so let me turn it over to Councilmember Sarmiento.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you to my colleagues for their indulgence on this. Can everybody regarding the Vista del Rio project who worked on that come forward, please? That's a community of friends, Dora Gallo, AmCal, Percy Vaz, and Mario Turner. And the folks we are waiting for, Tom and Deborah Willard with the Foundation for Affordable Housing, unfortunately got stuck in traffic. And one good-looking woman out there in the audience, my wife, Eva Casas, I know her, else I would never say that unless she was my wife. I'm asking her to come forward because she's representing, not her, not her interest as my wife, but in her capacity as one of the board members from the Dale MacIntosh Center, who was helpful and critical in this. So, thank you all for being here. I know that there's somebody who's outside who's going to be joining us as well, who's Mario Turner, a former Santa Ana resident, a former Planning Commissioner, and somebody who worked very hard on this project. Vista del Rio, like many of our projects that we have, we're very, very proud of, but this one is special because it's one of a handful of development projects in the state that allows for and tries to attract families with special needs, children who have special needs, but also are low-income. So, AmCal was very critical in this development, and personally, we've seen this project sort of evolve since my time as a Commissioner. I served on the Redevelopment and Housing Commission for many, many years. I was the mayor's appointee, as Mr. Turner was on that commission as well. So, we saw this from the early 2000s, and it wasn't moving, it wasn't going anywhere. We thought it was a great project, and the Willards, Tom and Deborah, with the Foundation for Affordable Housing, are the ones who kind of led that effort early on. Unfortunately, it ran into a lot of obstacles, funding problems, and AmCal was brought in at that point to go ahead and take the lead on that. So, I want to thank them because without their effort, this probably wouldn't have been realized, and I think now, it's something we can all be proud of. And just for reference sake, it's right at the intersection of Memory Lane and the City Drive. So, it was a triangle parcel of property. It was on the west side of the Santa Ana River, and it was given to us by the county, but the covenants required that it be used for affordable housing. So, for as much as I know the mayor and others wanted to keep it as open space, we couldn't. And so, to that effort, even though it was an open space, we developed, and I think into something that we can all be very proud of. But I wanted to bring everybody forward here because on the 24th, we're going to be having a ribbon cutting for that project, and if you haven't had a chance, please go visit us, join us for that date, take a look at it. It's a beautifully designed development because it's designed architecturally beautiful from the outside, but if on the inside you take a look, when you go through and take the tour, the hallways are wider, the doorways are wider, so people with wheelchairs can access their rooms and different facilities in the development. So, it's designed with a specific purpose, and it's also for families who have very low income, who can live there without having to double up or triple up. And sometimes, the way our rentals are built, they're just not designed well for folks who have special needs. So, all these folks had a lot to do with this project. I know that we, on the council, a few years ago, when this came before us, it was a very tortured process, and I want to thank, take the time to take, to thank my colleagues who supported this because this passed on a very close four to three. And that was Councilwoman Martinez, Councilmember Benavides, and Councilmember Tina Harrow, who's not here. But between the four of us, I think we all realize the value in developing this. This wasn't anything that, look, it, you know, it wasn't anything more than, I think, our responsibility to a population that had been neglected. And I want to thank all those who helped us support this, but specifically the folks behind me, because it was a very difficult, arduous process, both at the commission level and at the city council level. It was unfortunately a politically sensitive topic. I know those that were opposed, after it was approved, went out and took a look at it and said, you know what? In the end, this was a very good project, and so everybody, I think, got behind it once it was constructed. But let me have a few folks come up here, and let me introduce them one by one. And representing AmCal, Mr. Percy Vaz and Mario Turner. Just to let you know what their role was, when we were looking at trying to realize this project, they had to go out and seek close to $1 million in additional funding. They got some through city funds, through Section 8, but they also went out and received grant funding. And that was very difficult at that time because there just wasn't a lot of it. So, they competed, and they competed in a very difficult process and were able to go ahead and gather that. But they saw it, I think they came on to be the lead agency on that, was it in '09, I think? And so, after that, things became a lot smoother because AmCal is considered one of the better developers in the state. I know they're working on projects now in Anaheim, in Irvine, in Huntington Beach, and we're just proud of the work that they did there. We certainly hope that they continue to work with us here in the city on other projects, but I just think it's a very beautiful project, and I want to have them come up and say a few words. So, Mr. Vaz and Mr. Turner, please join me at the podium, and the floor is yours for you to go ahead and give us a little bit more information on that.
Thank you. Good evening. So, thank you for this special honor and recognition, mayor and council. Like the councilman said, this has been a really long, arduous, and winding road, and that's what makes it even more satisfying to be here now to see it complete. The satisfaction is deep. We build projects all across California and in other states that are bigger and shinier, but this project is special, and that's why it's deeply satisfying, because of the special people it serves. And on a more personal note, I have a daughter who is also special needs, who has the same physical and developmental challenges, and so it's very personal to me, and I greatly appreciate this recognition, and I want to acknowledge Mario Turner, our vice president, who is the person who spent a lot of blood, sweat, and tears getting this done. So, Mario?
Thank you, Percy. Thank you, council member. This did take about eight years, and so from that perspective, I think for us, it became a labor of love. We were involved about five of those years, but we could not have done it without the whole team. Clearly, the city's support, the council's support at that time was instrumental. We want to thank the city. We want to thank the city council. We want to thank Foundation for Affordable Housing, who's not here tonight, but they really initiated the project, obtained the entitlements, all the initial funds. Thank you to Community of Friends, who really stepped up and became our partner and made it happen as well. So, this is an exciting time. Dale MacIntosh, also a local nonprofit, was very helpful, helping us with the community's support in demonstrating the great need that is still growing here today in Santa Ana. So, I want to thank on the board at that time, Eva Casas Sarmiento, who was very helpful with that community's support and providing that to the council. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, she does, she does a lot. She's a multitasker. When she's not at home, I realize she's doing a lot more. But why don't I bring up Deborah Gallo with the Community of Friends? Because once we kind of resurrected this project, she was brought in by both the Foundation and AmCal to manage this project. So, they really did play a pivotal role, and they'll be managing the site, and they have a great track record with a lot of other facilities. But we're just very glad that they came on as a team member because it really didn't need that additional effort, even though the heavy lifting was done sort of right as they came on. And right as they came on, I remember many conversations with Deborah about things that were very difficult to overcome, and we were still considering, even at the 11th hour, whether this, whether this project would be realized. But I know that they do a lot of great work, and we're just very happy that they are playing a role here in this project. So, Deborah, why don't you go ahead and come up here and say a few words?
Good evening, everyone. I'm also very pleased to be here. As was mentioned by the council member, we were brought in about two and a half years ago to see the project to fruition. The funding had been received, and we oversaw the design process and the construction process, and we will be the long-term owner and manager. There was a lot of people who supported the project, and like Percy, this was personal in many cases. I also have a family member, a nephew, who is autistic, and so knowing about the needs of people who are young with a need for special care, what's going to happen to them as they grow older? And so, having an opportunity to build an apartment building where there are supportive services in the building, working with a lot of partners like Dale MacIntosh, like Project Independence, like Cherry, and the Regional Center of Orange County, has been a really great experience. Our organization was brought in primarily because we are a developer of housing for people of special needs. We provide housing for people who are homeless, who have mental illness, and now for people with developmental disabilities. And so, this has been a great opportunity for us. We have developed 38 buildings all over LA, Orange County, and San Diego, and we look forward to doing more in Orange County. Thank you very much for the honor, and for all of you who are available to join us on Monday, the 24th, at 2:45. We welcome your participation and for your opportunity to see this wonderful building. And thank you very much for all the council members. Even though there were some difficulties in the beginning, by the time we got into construction, everybody was aligned, and they saw the need to see the project come to fruition, and so we want to thank everyone for that support.
Thank you, Deborah. Thank you. Deborah isn't here, but she's Dora. Deborah, I want to send a little message to Deborah and Tom Willard because even though they aren't here, I know that they're stuck in traffic, as Percy was. I believe he said that he spent three hours on the freeway getting here. From how far are you coming from?
Agoura Hills.
Agoura Hills, okay. So, that's not around the corner, but this was important enough for him to make it down here, and it just goes to show how personal this was to all of us. It's personal to me because my wife just told me she doesn't want to come up here. I'm trying to coax her into coming up here and just saying how much she's done, because the reason why this became special to me is because she is an attorney who works at a nonprofit law firm that represents families with children who have disabilities and have special needs. So, we both have members in our families that have special needs, and so this is something very important. But I think it's important for our community because we start realizing that, as a population, we don't do enough for that community, and many cities don't do that. So, I thought we had an opportunity to do a very good project, but do a project for a population, I think, that sometimes goes ignored and neglected. She is a board member over at the Dale MacIntosh Center, which is right on the other side of the, of the border between Santa Ana and Garden Grove on Memory Lane. And so, what they do is they provide resources to the special needs community, and she was able to help gather 3,000 signatures when we needed them to show how important this project was. And so, in addition to being a parent of three, a very busy attorney, my wife, and having to deal with all my stuff, she was able to do much, much more and make this project become a reality. And more than anything, she sensitized me to how important it is to be, to play a role in the lives in many of these families that have struggles much larger than ours. So, you sure you don't want to come up? Come on up.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to say thank you to the council. Thank you to these wonderful organizations that put in so much time and effort. Like they all said earlier, it is personal to all of us. I think to most of us up here, for us, we have family members with disabilities, and so this project, project was extra special. For me, I sit on the board of an independent living center. Our motto is independent living, and a project like this makes that a reality. So, thank you to everyone involved.
You see why I married you? That's one of the, you know, you know what they say, when you find somebody who's more attractive than you, more articulate than you, and brighter than you, you marry them. So, you know, I did. I realize that these certificates have Vista del Sol, so that's my error. Why don't we do this? On Monday, the 24th, we're going to be having the ribbon cutting. Do you mind me giving you a new set of these with the correct name of the project? And so, I will hold these in abeyance, and I'll make sure that the corrections are made. But if you'll join me in giving everybody up here a round of applause for all the good work that they've done. Thank you for my, to my colleagues for their indulgence, Mr. Mayor, for holding this matter for us, but please join us on Monday. It's a great project. You'll love seeing it. You'll be proud of having this development in our city. Thank you very much.
Let's go ahead. We'll start now, Madlin.
Good evening, council. My name is Madlin, and I'm a resident from the community and a member of Sacred. And this evening, I just want to thank all of you for all the work that has been put in on the strategic planning. We know that the final workshop date is coming up this weekend on Saturday, and this being our first strategic plan and the first participatory opportunity that the community has had in shaping our future, we see the plan as a guiding vision and a hope for the future of this city. And as a guiding vision, and knowing how important the numbers are, we hope that you will also look further at what, though it may not have market value, is community well-being. In Sacred, we believe that an investment in our youth is an investment in Santa Ana's future. We believe that real safety means prevention of crime and danger, from crime and danger, and building an environment of trust through restorative justice. We also believe that a safe and healthy city needs a strong, equitable economy, and a healthy economy gives residents the opportunity to support their families and pursue their goals, and creates a strong tax base so that the city can provide services. I found a really beautiful quote from Robert Kennedy, who, although he wasn't the president, and it was President's Day yesterday, says something that I think is really important in going... in going forward. And he described what gross national product means and more important, what it does not mean. And Kennedy stated that "Too much and too long. We seem to have surrendered community excellence and community values to the mere accumulation of material things. Our gross national product, if we should judge America by that, counts air pollution and cigarette advertising and ambulances to clear our highways of carnage. It counts special locks for our doors and the jails for those who break them. It counts the destruction of our redwoods and the loss of our natural wonder in chaotic sprawl. It counts napalm and the cost of nuclear warheads and armored cars for police who fight riots in our streets. It counts Whitman's rifle and Speck's knife and the television programs which glorify violence in order to sell our toys to children. Yet, the gross national product does not allow for the health of our children, the quality of their education, the joy of their play. It does not include the beauty of their poetry, the strength of their marriages, the intelligence of our public debate, or the integrity of our public officials. It measures neither our wit nor our courage, neither our wisdom nor our learning, neither our compassion nor our devotion to our country. It measures everything in short except that which makes life worthwhile. And it tells us everything about America except why we're proud that we are Americans." In Santa Ana, we believe that with the strategic plan, that we will be proud of this city. Thank you.
After Madeline, we have Guadalupe Mata, please. Guadalupe, you're going to speak in Spanish?
Sí. No tengo mucho tema.
Let me, let me get the translator to come down. Okay, go ahead and start. He can hear you. Go ahead, Guadalupe.
Okay. Buenas noches a todos ustedes. Estoy aquí para recordarles que el 27 de abril es el homenaje a José Vargas, el famoso policía mojado. Espero contar con su asistencia y quiero obsequiarles el libro para que conozcan la historia de su vida. No es completa, pero de algo sirve para que ustedes, si alguno quiere tomar, hacer uso de la palabra ese día, con gusto será bienvenido. Quiero, por favor, no sé si ustedes los reparten bien. Es todo, muchas gracias.
Gracias por el trabajo que hace por la comunidad de Guadalupe.
I'd like to remind you that on April 17th is the posthumous celebration of José Vargas, the wetback police officer. So I would like to invite you to please come. I'm going to give you the book. It's part of his story. It's not the full story. So if you'd like to speak at that memorial, that celebration, you have something to talk about. So I'm going to pass them out to the secretary, to the clerk.
Thank you. So with that, let's go to our consent calendar. And I would ask Councilor Martinez, does she want to pull some items?
Oh, yes, Mayor.
I should have taken your motion when you said so moved.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
My mistake. I apologize, councilmembers.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, I would like to pull 25B, 25C, 25G and 25I.
All right, I'll entertain a motion on the balance. So moved. Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously, 25C, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Just really quickly on item 25C, if we could have staff approach us. And this is the agreement, it's a preparation for sanitary sewer and water financial plan. And tonight, they're asking us to recommend and expanding the contract, not to exceed $100,000. My question is, you know, and I know we have a history that this started in October of 2011, when the council first approved to move forward with creating a plan for our sewer and our water system. And so my question here this evening is that, you know, we're now at the tune of $485,000 potentially to do this plan. And so I'm wanting to understand, since we approved this in October of 2011, we are now in February of 2014, why is it taking so long? And why are we continuing to expand the cost for this plan?
Yes, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Members of the City Council. The, the information that, that we started off with back in, in 2011 is dated. And we should be looking at our water and sewer system from a modeling point of view, that's the engineering side, and also from the financial side. And we should be looking at it annually. And this is something that's already approximately three or four years old. So if we're going to bring something over to the council for final approval, it's already quite dated. So we need to update the financial model. When we move forward every year to year in the capital improvement plan, there are quite a few projects that we're able to construct. And so when you look at the financial model, we need to take that into account, how many capital projects that we've completed. And, and then that, that changes the financial need of the, of the water and sewer system going out five and 10 years. So this is something that we should be looking at frequently. And so these are certain costs.
So what do you mean frequently? Or do you mean the actual rate plan analysis that we should be doing annually? Or are you saying that we should be doing, you know, the sewer and water, you know, infrastructure analysis as well every year? Can you?
Can I, if I could? I just wanted to take an opportunity. The answer to your question is yes. We should be doing our needs every year and dependent on our capital needs and operating costs and water increases, that should be reflected in the annual update on the rate structure. So every year, we should be doing both.
Great, thank you. And I asked this question because we are, this Saturday, are going to have our strategic plan. And the importance of, of planning capital improvement projects such as water and sewers, as we all know, our water lines and our sewer lines are 75 to 100 years old. We need this plan. This is why we, we moved forward in 2011 of October to approve this. And now we're here at the final point, and I know you're going to be doing the rate analysis, but we need to assure that as we move forward, and I don't represent us on the Orange County Water District, my colleague Councilman Sarmiento does, and my colleague Councilman Benavides represents us on the sanitation district, that we continue to work very closely with these two members that represent us in those two agencies. And as we all know, that the governor recently, you know, put in order, you know, a drought. And, you know, rate increases are going to be across the board, whether it be from the Metropolitan Water District to the Orange County Water District, and then moving down here to the residents of the city of Santa Ana. And before I, I know certainly before I approve any rates, I'm wanting to make sure that there is direct communication with the Metropolitan Water District, where Dan Grissette represents us, and my colleague Councilman Sarmiento, before we decide any rate or increase based on this analysis that you're doing. Because at the end of the day, I truly believe that our residents should and still continue to receive the best water with low rates, since we do have most of the water wells here in the city of Santa Ana. Thank you.
Is there a motion for approval?
So moved.
Question.
Oh.
A motion? Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Now there's a question. Go ahead.
The, based on the report here that we see, Mr. Gómez, there should be, or based on the staff report, there should be an actual report from pre, last year. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
Both overall, as well as the, those lines that the Orange County Sanitation District has suggested that, that they might want to transfer over to us. I'd like for you to make that available to us specifically. I'm specifically interested in, in particular, anyway, interested in those lines that we're in discussion with, with the Orange County Sanitation District. But given that this is something that we approved for, this study that we approved, and the fact that we have not yet seen it, and we're coming here asking for, for an extension and update, it is something that, bottom line, we need to, we need to get this information on a more timely basis.
We will provide that.
More timely than that.
Okay, we have motion to second. Those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, nobody opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item, I believe Councilor Martinez, 25D, was it?
No. You know what, Mayor? I gave you the wrong ones.
All right, which is the right one?
But I wanted 25I and 31B. I decided not to do 25D or E.
Madam Clerk, can you therefore correct the record? And for the record, deem those others approved as part of the consent calendar, since she indicated a different one.
Yes.
Let's go to the one that she's now indicating, please.
Yes, 25I, which is, you know, I have a question. And so I'm glad that Mr. Gómez stayed up here. And the 60-post top LED streetlights, you know, I know that we're transferring to LED to, you know, to be more energy efficient, and we're transferring. But I know that there's been some recent complaints of where we've been able to transfer and, and put LED lights, or saying that the lighting is not bright enough in certain neighborhoods. So I'm wanting to make sure that we can go back and review that, because we know that lighting is very important, not only for pedestrians or motors where they're walking, but also from a safety perspective. I'm wanting to make sure that there's enough lighting so no criminal activity is happening within neighborhoods. And so even though that we're wanting to be more green and efficient, sometimes, you know, lighting like this may not work in a, in a certain neighborhood. And so we want to be very cognizant of that, that the quality of life and the safety comes first of our residents, more so than wanting to be more energy efficient and wanting to provide these LED lights. I'm supportive of this item, but I'm wanting to make sure that we go back, because I know we recently received a couple emails from constituents asking about these, this question.
Yes, we've received those complaints and we are following up on them. And, and just in general, the LED lights generally put out a greater number of lumens than the older incandescent lamps, so, but we're aware of it and we'll follow up.
So could there be some issues in regards to the technology or something in certain that neighborhood?
What happened in one particular complaint is that we had incandescent lights in twos, on both sides of the street. And when we put in the LEDs, we only put them in on one side of the street. So we need to look at the other side of the street and perhaps retrofit those or do something with the other side.
Great, thank you.
Can I have a motion?
I'll move.
Is there a second? We have a motion, second by Benavides. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, nobody opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next item.
And 31B, just very quickly, I don't need any staff to come up here, but, you know, this is a new phenomenon for, for us, you know, as we move forward as a, as a very diverse community. And what this item is, is a conditional use permit to allow dog kennel on the south part of Harbor. A lot more, you know, we have over, I think, I'm not sure, but correct me if I'm right, Chief Rojas, we have over 10,000 registered, you know, dogs? Or is it lower than that number? I read somewhere around there that that's how many registered licenses, yes.
I believe it's over that number.
It's over the 10,000 mark number. So there you have it. There's a growing population of our residents, you know, that have plenty of pets, in particular dogs. I don't have any animals, but I certainly advocate for providing the opportunities to our residents, you know, and I, and I've, you know, and since I'm on this point as well, I've asked our Parks and Rec Director to look in any possible way. And I know that we lack open space for our residents, but at the same time, physical activity, whether you're walking your dog or not, if we can provide the open space for our residents to walk their dogs, you know, currently they're going to other cities. But I think that we need to be very creative in the spaces that we have. And I think we have the opportunity to do that in certain areas. And so I just want to commend our staff and the city council for moving forward and, and changing the zoning to allow these kinds of uses, because they're important here in our city. With that, I'll move the item.
Second. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. I believe that brings us to our 55A. I would entertain a motion on this item.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion carries. So with that, we have no work-study session. City managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the City Council, I do want to recognize one person who, who has left, but she does deserve recognition, and that's Nancy Fong. She was a temporary executive director for the Redevelopment Agency, and she did a tremendous job. And I just want to thank her. Even though she's not here, I would like for everyone to give her a round of applause for her contributions to the city.
Thank you. And with that, let's start on the left. Councilor Amesquio, any comments for this evening?
Yes, first of all, I'd like to let everyone know to please save the date. On March 22nd, from 4 to 8, we will be having our first annual Plaza Primavera in the downtown, on the corner of French and Fourth Street. There will be entertainment, live entertainment, food, arts and crafts for the whole family to come in and enjoy. So please save the date, March 22nd, from 4 to 8. Also, I would like to ask staff if we could please get some kind of quarterly progress report so that we don't run into this like we did with Councilmember Martinez, where we don't know how much has been spent. We need to know how we're going with each project and, and update on a regular basis.
Thank you. Councilwoman Roman Reyna, please.
Sure, welcome. Again, I want to just recognize and thank the committee from El Sol that put a lot of time and energy to come together to really impact our students. It was a great project, and all the elected officials that were there, that were really, not there for the photo op, but really rolling up their sleeves and getting to work, which was absolutely fantastic. Got an opportunity to participate in the community neighborhood cleanup as well, with Sacred over on Bishop and Flower, which was great to see a lot of the families in the community running around with bags and picking up our community, taking ownership. The strategic plan was absolutely incredible. A lot of people had a lot to say, which was great, because that's exactly what we're looking for, their input and what direction they want to go into. Talking about saving the date, the Santa Ana Zoo turns 62, kind of right. And birthday's March 1st and 2nd, so I invite all the community to come on out and see what's going on in the zoo. For those that are unaware, Santa Ana is the only city in Orange County that has a zoo. I think that's a humongous feather in our cap. Please support it and participate and see what's new going on in the zoo. With that as well, I want to kind of piggyback and my colleague as far as getting some type of progress report, ongoing status of any projects that we have going, any of the consultant work that is taking place, whether the project is completed, whether it's in progress, whether there's a hiccup someplace, would be absolutely fantastic. And like always, shop in Santa Ana. Thanks so very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilman Benavides, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I want to ask, I don't have some comments, but if we can close this meeting, this meeting in memory of a friend, Alex Serrano Jr. Some of us may have heard about an incident that took place on, on Friday night, where a young man, 25 years old, walked in to Coastal Communities Hospital with gunshot wounds and, and passed away a few minutes later. This young man was a, was a personal friend who I knew since he was in junior high, young teenage boy. And, you know, the, the papers and might, might tell one, one picture, but I wanted to provide a little bit more complete picture on, on Alex. Grew up in a, in a tough neighborhood, actually neighborhood. I don't speak often about the challenges that sometimes we face in the city. I think it's important for us to, to look at opportunities and economic development, supporting all the positive projects that are taking, that are taking place in our city. But they, there continue to be pockets in our city that are challenging. And it's challenging to raise a family, to be a kid, to be a teenager. And one of those is the neighborhood where I've chosen to live for the last almost 20 years, specifically because it is a challenging neighborhood. This young man grew up in that area, was one of the most faithful kids in some of the youth programs that we've put together through KidWorks, took him to camp, Bible studies. He's a shy kid, quiet kid, always there to help, lend a, lend a hand whenever needed. And as he got a little bit older, he did end up making some, some poor choices. And as he became an older teen, young adult, the, the need sometimes for, for community, for acceptance, draws and lures some of our young people into gangs. And, and Alex made some poor choices and ended up associating. However, you know, a couple of, just a few months ago, he stopped by my house. He was doing well. He was proud of the fact that he was a dad of a, of a young toddler. And he was just sharing with me just how he was, just really working hard on, on trying to stay focused and, and work, provide for his boy, be, be a good dad, something that he never had in his own life. And I'm, I'm reminded now is, with him being gone, just of, of an organization out in LA called Homeboy Industries and the, the motto that Father Greg Boyle out there uses, which is nothing stops a bullet like a job. And it's something that I think as we, as we look forward, and I think a number of months, a number of years ago, Councilwoman Martinez, I think probably did have it right when we're focusing on having a, a commission that was a gang intervention. focusing on having a commission that was a gang intervention, prevention commission. And there was a gang study that we were doing at the time to, a citywide study on how we can improve and address some of the challenges that we do face. Unfortunately, because of previous council political reasons, ended up sabotaging that study and that commission went away. And perhaps it wasn't the right time, or whatever the case might be. But as, as we go forward, currently we're in the process of looking at or adopting a five-year strategic plan. And what I want to ask our staff, City Manager, Police Chief, and for my colleagues here is that we consider under the public safety goal as one of the strategies for us to, to consider, being intentional about partnering with, with reentry nonprofits. Again, some of these kids, Alex being one of those, where maybe made some poor decisions, but I've seen far too many of my neighbors' kids that I've known, young men, young women, they maybe make some poor choices, end up getting caught in the system, they come out, they really want to do well. They do open up their, their minds and, and, but when they come out and there's, there isn't necessarily a safety net there for them, or there isn't that hand up, after a couple of months of trying to get gainful employment and going from one place to another, not being able to secure a good job, we end up losing them again sometimes. And so I'm hopeful that we would choose to adopt some type of strategy, to be intentional about giving these kids, these young men, these young women, an opportunity. And frankly, just as I think about my friend, as I think about Alex, just to make it so that it's, his death is not in vain, that we take some action that, that maybe would prevent this from continuing to happen. So with that, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martinez, please.
Thank you, Mayor Polito. I too just want to, one wish Nancy Fong, you know, another happy retirement and thank her for her service. You know, she was here, you know, not for so long, but, you know, very nice woman. I thank her for coming here at a time when we needed someone, and so greatly appreciated. And I saw her in the audience earlier, and it's unfortunate that we didn't get to say goodbye to her, but, you know, I do wish her well. And with that being said, you know, I, I have some issues, so hopefully our staff is ready to write things down. I had sent an email out to our Public Works Director and CC, our City Manager, but I haven't gotten a response, and maybe it's overlooked because I do send hundreds of emails. I will admit that to staff. But on the Third and Broadway, because this was brought up by one of Chief Rojas's officers that I ran into in the downtown, Third and Broadway, the, the crosswalk is very dark. And I'm not sure if many of you have been out there, but when you're crossing there, and I live right there, it is fairly dark. And again, as we're looking at pedestrian and bicycling safety, the downtown is very important. When you have a crosswalk that is not lit up by the time it hits 7:00 or 8:00 PM, it's very dangerous and tons of people are crossing. So it's between the Artist Village of where Memphis and the C4 Dally, it's that crosswalk there. And so wanting to see what we can do to enhance with lighting, whether it be LED lighting, I'm not, whatever have you, but if we can look into that, I think that needs to be a top priority as we move forward with our downtown and the safety of our pedestrian and, and our cyclists down there. The next thing I want us to look at is many, a couple of the residents approached us here today in regards to parking validation and the issues that we're having with our third-party contractor. I think that we need to set some kind of policy that if issues occur like that again, that we send some kind of notice or work with them to ensure that the city will cover those costs. We don't need folks, you know, having their cars, they're not being able to get out. I think we need to figure out some kind of solution with that third-party contractor. We certainly don't want to cover everyone's costs, but I know there's, there's going to be times where certain people are not going to have money, they lost their money or something happened, or they lost their ticket. You know, they shouldn't have to wait two or three hours, you know, before, you know, they're able to get their vehicle out or not get their vehicle out. I think we need to be more compassionate about some of these issues as, as we, as we move forward here in the city. The next issue I want to talk about as well, and I think many of us have discussed this, and again, they brought the issue up again, the homeless issue that we face here in our civic center. We received an email from a resident where they wanted to take their children to the Santa Ana Library. And sure enough, you know, we know that we face this issue, and, you know, we do have a responsibility such as the county of Orange, but the rest of the cities here in Orange County. I think it's now time that we aggressively approach this issue and work with the county. And I know our City Managers met with the CEO. I'm not sure who's now sitting on that 2020 Homeless Commission. I'm not sure if Chief Rojas is representing us there or not. We need to get back at that table and figure out some kind of way of what we can do to address this issue. It's long overdue, so if we can really bring this to either our Public Safety Committee or work with you directly, City Manager, but we need to have some kind of strategy to move forward with this, and this should be part of our strategic plan. The next issue I wanted to talk about as well, received the message via Facebook, and I think they send the message also to Councilman Reyna, and I see, and I sent an email out either last night or this morning to our City Manager and our Parks and Rec Director about the permitting process that we have for sport in our public parks. These are policies that have been set, and I know that our, our Parks and Rec Director has done a tremendous job, in particular with the soccer issue. We have a lot more people playing soccer than any other sport. And I understand that we're trying to create a balance and wanting to assure that all our residents are able to play whatever sport within our parks. And I know we're limited with space, but I think that when you have a specific team that doesn't have money, we, we charge fees to use our facilities, and sometimes they don't have that money to use our facilities, and they want to go to a public park, but they can't because the park ranger will tell them that you've now become an organized team here and you're not able to play in our, in our parks. I believe that we need to figure out a way and relook at these policies. And so I'm going to ask if we can bring this issue up to the Prey Council Committee, and also if we can return that particular parent's response, because I'll tell you that on my Facebook, there's over 25-plus messages already from residents across the city with the same concerns and certain different issues that they've had. And it's not that our Parks and Rec Department is doing a bad job, it's just that we have a lot of policies in place from way back in the day that today they don't apply, and we need to relook at them. Because if we want to build a healthier community, we want to engage our, our parents and our youth, we need to be more open to and more inclusive to allowing our kids to be able to play in their parks. It is their parks. So with that being said, the next thing I, I wanted to talk about, and I'm not sure, the past two council meetings, we haven't had our water, our city water, so I'm not sure what's going on with that. I, I prefer not to drink out of a bottle, you know, so I, if we can bring back our water, I would greatly appreciate it. Santa Ana has the best water here in California, and we certainly should be consuming it and, and avoid water bottles. So I hope at the next meeting, we will have our water back. And then the last thing I wanted to bring up is that this Saturday, we're also having our Bike Safety Forum at the Santa Ana Library at 3:00 PM. For, I think it goes from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. I'd like to encourage our residents to be in attendance Saturday, 3:00 PM at the Santa Ana Main Library. And lastly, I just wanted to, 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 to thank our staff. I know that, you know, we have a lot of things going on in, in 2014. We've had a lot of staff changes, but at the same time, I, I believe that we have an opportunity for greatness here in this city. And we need to plan, and we all need to work together, and, and, and we need to work with our community. And so when I praise all of you as staff, I, I, I truly mean it, but at the same time, I also want to encourage you to continue to be supportive of our community and continue to engage them because at the end of the day, we, we serve them. You know, you, you come into gov, you, you get a job in government because you want, not because you want to make a lot of money, you, you, you got this job because you wanted to make a difference in the community, whether you live here or you don't live here. We as elected officials got elected because we wanted to serve, and we wanted to serve people. And so it, it takes the elected officials and the city staff to do that. And so I wanted us to continue to, to have that on top of our minds as we move forward with our strategic plan. And I know this Saturday, our community has one more opportunity to, to have comment in front of the council, and we're very close to presenting a really good plan where the community was involved. And at the end of the day, as we move forward with all the other plans that we have for 2014, I truly believe that this city is going to become a better place even when this City Council is no longer here because of the involvement of, of the residents of the city of Santa Ana. With that being said, thank you.
Councilwoman Ben Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I do want to thank our staff as well. Sometimes it, we believe it goes unsaid that all the good work that's being done by you all is not appreciated, and sometimes it should be explicitly mentioned. So thank you for all the great work that you've done recently especially. So I just wanted to mention that last Thursday, Congresswoman Sanchez had a, had an event addressing Covered California and specifically enroll Orange County. And what that is, is her effort, and I guess what should be all our efforts to try to encourage everybody to enroll in the, in the healthcare plan. And here in the county, but more specifically in the city, we have a real issue with having many, many of our residents who are not, who don't have insurance, health insurance and medical insurance. So to the extent we can get the word out, the deadline is on the 31st of March, that everybody should be enrolled and should have applied by that point, or else they won't be covered for that, for that year. If we can try to get the word out as effectively as we can, we realize that we have special needs here in the city with respect to some of our residents because they're high, there are very high incidence of diabetes, you know, high blood pressure, you name it, we have residents that suffer from it. So to try to cover everybody is very important. So I made a personal commitment to the Congresswoman that I was going to try to do my share, and I know all of you out there in the public will do your share. But it is something that we have a mutually beneficial reason to do this, because if our residents aren't covered, they aren't receiving the care that they need, they're going to be visiting our hospitals in, in much worse conditions than they should be. This is all obviously done to prevent people from, from becoming severely ill. And unfortunately, that's what we've seen, is that many of our residents don't have that preventive care, and they end up in emergency rooms when things that could have been resolved much earlier, you know, morph into things that are very, very serious. So that said, please just remember that date, March 31st. And finally, I just want to, because I know it's been raised a couple times, water rates. With respect to water, we all know that this has probably been the driest year in recorded history with respect to waterfall. And, and so we know that those are, there are going to be impacts to this because now we're, we're on a trend that shows that the hydrology in our, in our state is suffering severely. So there's going to be issues, issues with respect to the Metropolitan Water District and their resources and their ability to fund us and provide water to us because we're fortunate in that we have our own wells, but nonetheless, we still purchase some of our water as well. When their rates increase, that means our rates increase. So we're trying to figure out a way that we can reduce the impact and mitigate the impact to our rate payers here in the city, but there will be some impact. So we need to continue to have that conversation. I'll continue to keep my colleagues and the public apprised, but, you know, when it doesn't rain, that really isn't anybody's fault. It's just that, you know, there will be some consequences to that. The good news is that we plan so far ahead with many of these projects that we have, like the groundwater replenishment system, having a lot of reserves and having reservoirs, all those things have prevented us from having to raise rates immediately. So that's what's good. There'll be a lag time, and hopefully we can all do our rain dances and, you know, we'll see some, maybe, maybe there's a March miracle out there and we see a lot of water as a result. But the trend does not look good for the next couple of years, so we have to just brace ourselves and be ready. So with that, I'll wish everybody a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Reyna, you had one more?
Yeah, absolutely. I want to thank my colleague Martinez for bringing up the issue about the fields. And this is maybe something we can send over to the Prey so that we could kind of hash out some things there as well. Then I do want to mention this, that we used to have a staff appreciation day with the executive team and the council would serve up burgers here at Birch Park and have a staff appreciation day. And I thought that'd be a fantastic idea to revisit because they do do a lot of work behind the scenes that they don't get an opportunity to, to be recognized in. I remember seeing Dave Rain flipping burgers, and as an employee, I absolutely loved it. It was great because didn't get to see those all the time.
Did he have those OP shorts on?
Yeah. He would definitely show, show some legs, absolutely. So that might be something that we could revisit as well. Thanks so very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. And with that, I just want to ask the clerk that we're going to close in memory of Alex Serrano Jr., and if you could contact Councilman Benavides, may get information on the family and, you know, you know, give them our condolences and, and possibly send flowers to the funeral and whatever is appropriate. So with that, this meeting is adjourned.